Welcome, everybody, to the 12 o'clock show with Mayor Joe. Joining me is a very special guest and one week before Halloween, I think next year we'll try and plan it a little bit differently, but it's actually our Franklin County Coroner Office of Nathan Overmeyer. Thank you for coming today.
Thanks so much for having me.
It's always interesting to see who comes on the show, and so this is your first appearance on it, and so everybody's like, well, what exactly does a coroner do? What are your responsibilities other than obviously the obvious? But what are your responsibilities?
So, the obvious responsibility of the coroner of every county in Ohio is to determine cause and manner of death. And in the office of a coroner, we are responsible for all the non-natural deaths. So there's five manners of death, Joe. There are your, so you have natural deaths, but then our four that we deal with are accidents, homicides, suicides, and undetermined deaths. So that's our jurisdiction. So when someone is, has a fall, or when someone dies by violence or injury, it becomes our responsibility to determine the cause and the manner of that death. And then beyond that, there's a whole lot of other coalition building that I'm a part of to try to prevent these sort of deaths in our community. For example, we partnered with Mothers of Murder Columbus Children to reduce the amount of gun violence in our, in our communities. We work with public health in all hosts of variety in different ways to reduce the amount of deaths that we're seeing in Franklin County.
So it's a really light job, right?
Very light.
Lots of fun games, okay.
Very easy.
So, I know we kind of talked about this a little bit before the show, but is there a time that is like the, I guess, a busier time of year than others? You know, around here, there's times where depending on the department, like our Parks and Recs Department is always significantly more busy in spring and early summer. Events is busy pretty much all year except for a couple of weeks here and there. So how about the coroner's office?
Well, so seasonality is a little bit unfortunate. We're going up to the fall holiday seasons, the winter holidays with Thanksgiving and Christmas, and so it's unfortunate that, yes, we do see family members checking on some of their elderly family members and whom they may not be checking on that much during the year, and so we do see an uptick of decedents, folks who have died from family members checking in on them. We do see an uptick of families who die because of the holiday season. They've drank too much, maybe tried to use, tried some drug use that they normally wouldn't do, so we'll see some overdoses trending up. And unfortunately, this is, so for many, many folks, the holiday season is a joyous time, but unfortunately, for some folks, it's a not-so-joyous time. So there's increased rates of depression, anxiety that we see in the community, and that sometimes results in deaths from suicide. And so we do see an uptick in some of those deaths. In the summertime, we see an uptick of motor vehicle accidents and certainly motorcycle deaths. At least once a week in Franklin County, someone dies of a motorcycle accident, and it just breaks my heart when I see someone who hasn't worn a helmet. And oftentimes, you know, most of those accidents are preventable. That's, that person who was, who was in the motorcycle didn't need to die because if they would have taken the right precautions. We see the uptick in, in the summertime as well with gun violence homicides.
Yes, I, I figured that there would be certain times of the year, and it's unfortunate, you know, you mentioned the holidays, and that, that makes sense with that, especially when we, we've seen the last couple years since COVID, is this focus on mental health and how that's been, and then that kind of emphasis. And Ohio, central Ohio's cloudy weather is probably not something that helps matters much, you know, the sun that tends to be, other people are a little bit happier. Now, obviously, there's a lot of challenges in your position, but is there anything that's kind of, that's like your biggest challenge for what you and your team are trying to do on a regular basis?
So, I mean, the biggest challenge that I had when I first entered the office was there's a, there's not enough pathologists to do the job. So thankfully, since I've been in office for the last two years, I've hired three forensic pathologists, and that's helped reduce the amount of work that our office has had to do, kind of spreading the work to the five pathologists that were already there, and now we have eight. And so that makes, with these eight pathologists, we have just the right amount to do the work of Franklin County. And so that has been a challenge, it's less of a challenge now. It's my responsibility to work with these pathologists and work with our investigators, our toxicologists, our more staff team, to make sure there's enough people doing this really important work. So when I first entered, that's, that was a challenge of making sure we, we have enough people qualified to do the work that is being done in the office, and now how do we keep them? And I'm working with OSU and other partners. The county has been really supportive of making sure that we're partnering with partners like Ohio State University to build that workforce pipeline. And so we're in early discussions to create a forensic pathology fellowship, to say, hey, we want to train pathology residents into a forensic pathology fellowship here in Columbus, so that we have a continual workforce pipeline of forensic pathologists to make sure that we're doing the work. Because Franklin County and central Ohio is growing. We have over a million residents now. It's estimated to be, some estimates say, three million in several decades. So we're gonna need not just eight forensic pathologists.
Probably a little bit more.
A little bit more, right? As the population grows, we expect that the death rate to...
It's a growth industry.
So as we grow, we're, you know, more folks will pass away unfortunately, but we have to meet that need.
Well, I know when you were kind enough to give us a tour of the facility, and I think it wasn't long after it opened, one of the interesting things that we talked about is, you know, I think there was a case where it was, you know, somebody, somebody had passed away and it was a young child, and obviously, that takes on a different connotation, and I think the conversation becomes, you know, like we see in TV and movies all the time, you know, getting pressure from outside influences to hurry up and do this and hurry up and do that, but there's really only so much that you can do. I think there's certain things that you can tell right away by looking at a body, but all the toxicology, the, you know, the drug test, all of that, that takes time, and no matter how many times somebody calls you, I can't imagine that it's something that, okay, now it's in, now that you called me five times, I'm gonna go ahead and make sure you get the answers. That, that would be interesting. You don't have to comment, because I don't want to put any mayors on the spot.
No, I do want to comment, you bring up such a good point about how there are so many, we rely on so many different partners to help us determine cause and manner of death. So, we're an independent office, you know, no one's telling us what to do, but we certainly rely on law enforcement in their investigative approach. We rely on histologists that we do not have in our office, so we have to send our tissue samples out for sampling, and we, that takes time, sometimes weeks, to get those tissue samples back so that our physicians can look at it under the microscope. We don't have like a tissue machine that like puts them in the blocks that we can examine under the microscope, so all that takes time. We're working with our toxicologists, we work with other partners, you know, if it's a, if it's a officer-related, you know, death, we're relying on BCI and their investigative approaches, and so it doesn't take a day, it takes sometimes several weeks. We've made some great strides, and so the average time that it takes for our toxicology results to get back is now about 15 days. When I first started, it was 40 days. And so 40 days to get, you know, overdose death, those results back is now 15 days. And so now we're, we're waiting on other partners to get back to us. And our goal is most cause and manner of deaths should be determined within 30 to 60 days. Sometimes, if it's a clear, you know, if someone is shot in the head, unfortunately, we know that that person was alive, and then there's a cause that happened, and now that person is deceased, that can take, you know, days. Certainly, we need to do our due diligence on the background, the backend, to make sure...
To make sure that there wasn't any, yeah.
Yep.
We've all seen Law &amp; Order and CSI, so I guess one of the things is the sense of closure. Like, take away unique circumstances, but finding out something with the toxicology or some of these, you know, reasons for death, it probably brings a lot of closure to the families when they find out, okay, this is what it was. And that cannot be an easy thing to deliver that news and how that is presented, so whether you do it or whoever on your staff does it, it takes a special type of person with a heart that can deal with that, and so kudos to you. I don't know if I could do that, but yeah, that's gotta be probably the roughest part of what you do.
Thank you.
But conversely, please go ahead.
And if I may comment, you know, I have a great group of case secretaries, of mortgage attendants, of investigators that deal with families and law enforcement, day in, day out, delivering news, sharing information with next of kin, and that's a really important point is, is next of kin and making sure that we are being transparent in our investigative processes and sharing timely information, that we're giving timely results. They have to be accurate, and so sometimes that accuracy takes a little longer, but we want to be timely. Like I said, most cases are done within two months, but we also have, need to have compassion when we're delivering those results. So I'm confident in my team of providing empathetic closure statements to families so that they get some closure, but they get it in a way that we can build together, we can move forward together.
So, on the flip side of it, given the fact that you deal with the subject area of death as much, why does anybody want to be a Franklin County coroner? Why do you want to be at the Franklin County coroner? How does that, what drives you in that?
So, early on in, in life and throughout college and med school, I've learned a lot about public service and servant leadership, and so I've always been drawn to, to service. From an early age, it's all been, how do you give back? And I feel very fortunate that a lot has been given to me, so I've, I've tried to find ways, how do I give back? And I think this is a good way to do that. This is a, this is a rough job. Every day, we deal with cases that are young people, folks, older people who have died unexpectedly or suddenly, and so those are tough issues, and it's not meant for everybody. So if I can do that, if I can take the heavy lift, that burden, and give back to my community, that, that's what drives me. And I'm truly, I feel very fortunate to be in this position, to be able to, you know, give accurate and timely results back to family and then hope to help heal, because as a, as an osteopath physician, one of the, one of our main philosophies is to think of our patients as whole people and provide holistic care, and so that's what I want to do.
I appreciate that. Do you have time for a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
We did get some from one of our residents.
Be happy to.
So Reynoldsburg does cover three counties, Franklin, Licking, and Fairfield. If somebody dies in the Licking portion of Franklin County, does that go to the Licking County coroner? Or if they die in the Licking County but are a resident in Franklin County, does it just by where location, or is it by residency?
So this is a great question, and being in a, a city where there's, you're surrounded, you're in a three-county area...
Very special.
Very special. And so it's all about, when, it's all about where you die.
Okay.
And so it's not about your residency or where you lived, it's about where you die. And so the unfortunate accident that happened with the school bus, that occurred in, I believe...
The Licking County.
Licking County. And so we reached out, so that is now the Licking County jurisdiction. That Licking County coroner and his autopsy facility is now responsible for determining the cause and manner of death of those decedents. We reached out to him and said, hey, we have more resources in Franklin County, do you need help? He's like, nope, we got it. And so if you die in Licking County, it's a Licking County jurisdiction. If you die in Fairfield County, it's the Fairfield County coroner, same thing.
Next question is, you know, is there a mechanism to seal a coroner's report from public availability? So, you know, whether, with HIPAA laws and privacy requirements, obviously, there are certain things that higher-profile, things of that nature, that become like criminally involved, that there's things like that, but is, where's that dividing line between what does get released versus what doesn't?
Again, another great question. So, we are a public entity as the Franklin County Coroner's Office, and so, and all coroners in Ohio are publicly funded, and so the work that we do in the coroner's office, therefore, by definition, should be publicly available. And so the coroner report, the toxicology report, the autopsy report, those are all reports that we furnish as, as a public entity, and therefore, that's the reason why that information is oftentimes public. There are certain situations, all outlined in the code, and if you're a, an Ohio Revised Code person, you can Google that, it's, the section in Ohio is 313, and in particular, to this question, it's 313 point dot 10, I think, and that determines what circumstances would, would we need to not release some information to the public. And the clearest example is there's a criminal investigation underway where our investigation is done, but there's a, another aspect that we can't release to the public yet.
Okay.
And we do our best to protect HIPAA of our decedents. Certainly, if there's medical records from an outside source that doesn't get involved, that does, is not brought into the public realm, then that's not released. So the rub is that there are some, things that, there are some diseases or conditions that are stigmatized in our community. For example, if someone had hepatitis C, which some people would say is a, is a stigmatized disease process, and that's not related to your death, we would not, that would not be part of the public record. But if it is part of your disease process, that's part of the reason why you died, and now that's part of why you brought, were brought to the office, that would be public record.
Okay.
And I deal with this every day with overdoses, certainly families, you know, overdoses are highly stigmatized, mental health addiction, highly stigmatized. And so when the cause of death says acute intoxication of X, you know, families are burdened by that, and they feel so much grief, sorrow, shame, but that determination is why that decedent is here in our office, and we, that's, we have to be truthful.
That's part of, yeah.
So we have to be accurate in that, and we can't not share that with the public.
Yeah. I can't imagine how many public records requests you get in general, but...
Thousands.
Yeah, I bet. So briefly explain, and this is really getting into, getting into it, really getting into things with, when you have to perform an autopsy, a limited autopsy versus an external exam, as well as our hospital desk subject to an autopsy by a coroner, those types of things. And again, this really getting in, deep into the weeds, and I have one more question after that.
Yeah. So it all depends on the, on the circumstances, right? So if, for example, if someone is shot in the head, that might be a reason why, based on the circumstances, we might perform a limited exam. We don't need to do a typical, you know, full autopsy.
Yeah.
Sometimes we do need to, even if there's clear evidence that had, that probably wouldn't have no effect on the outcome. For most homicides, or almost all homicides, we do, because especially if there's a, there's a victim and now a suspect that's now, could be criminally charged, we wouldn't provide the prosecution with the best evidence that shows that this person could be held liable for that. And so it's all based on circumstances of whether it's, you know, full autopsy, unlimited autopsy, just an external exam with a CT, and sometimes we, we base, you know, family preference. So for example, in Reynoldsburg, you have a, a high population of knees and a poly, and we try to be efficient in some of our exam processes, and so some folks, well, in the statute, you're allowed to object to an autopsy for personal religious reasons, and sometimes we share with the family, like, this is a, this is a homicide case, we could go to the courts, but the court is always going to side with us on the law, but if we don't need to do that, then we want to be as...
Respectful.
Respectful to your faith, to your cultural, to, to your culture, and expedite the case so that you can have your traditional burial processes or what have you. So we try to, it's all based on circumstances.
Okay. And the last question, the resident mentions that they remember voting for the county coroner. Is this position no longer, no longer voted for rather than an appointment to a commission? So I, I thought it, you're, it is a voted position, correct?
It is a vote, so you should see me if you live in Franklin County, you will see me on the ballot, on an elected position. I was appointed to fulfill halfway through my predecessor's term.
Okay.
So that's, that's the reason.
That's what it is. All right, we have one other question from...
Yep, we did get one from a viewer, it says, "Are there any programs available to help young people learn more about careers in the coroner's office? Job shadowing, internships?"
That's a great question. So on our website, go, you can Google Franklin County Coroner's Office. On the dropdown, you'll see, the top tab talks about education. So I am devoted and committed to education, making sure we have the next folks of leaders to be our investigators, to be more, mortgage attendants, or folks who do help the physicians with autopsies, or to be a forensic pathologist. And so if you are a high school student who, like in Reynoldsburg High School, we had a group of, a forensic science class come to, to view our facility, to view what an autopsy would look like and have some education. So there's some different parts to, if you're a high school student versus if you're a college student, you're gonna have more access if you're already on the way to, to be, we want to be age-appropriate, education-appropriate, so that we're not traumatizing...
You know, taking a third grade class to the brain room?
Right, we're not taking, no. But if you are a college student and you're about to graduate to be, you know, have a, you're gonna have a Bachelor's of Science in Forensics, then we're gonna offer a program to really get you involved in some of the processes and really learn, have some experiential learning to what you might be doing soon.
All right. Well, thank you.
Good question.
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you so much for having me.
I appreciate it. I will let you go back, and we're gonna go ahead and book you in for next Halloween, and we'll take you up on the challenges as far as what the costumes look like.
Appreciate you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Really appreciate you. Thank you.
All right, go ahead and, you're free, and you won't see him, but a good friend of mine, Jeremy Blake, he and I have known each other for a long time, he's working with the coroner's office, he's standing over there hoping that I do not turn the camera on him, but I do appreciate him all coming out today, so...
You're a wonderful prospect.
There we go. This is gonna be a busy show, so we have another guest. For her first appearance on the 12 o'clock show with Mayor Joe is Reynoldsburg's newest Board of Education member, Kendra McKay. Come on down. How are you doing today?
I'm great.
I don't know how you follow up the coroner after that one. Not, not too many things there. So first of all, you've only been on the Board of Education for a couple of months now, right? So it's been just a very limited amount of time. So you know everything, every question that's got an answer to, you got that?
Yep.
All right, good. So I guess the first question that I would like to ask is, why did you want to be on the Board of Education in general?
Well, it's something that I considered many times over the years, but, you know, life kind of didn't allow for it. But, you know, things changed for me personally, and this position came available in July, and so I threw my hat into the ring. And, you know, I've always been involved with my kids' schooling and their activities and things, so I wanted to see if I could make an impact on a, on a bigger scale.
There you go. So what's the first few months of your life on the board been like for you? I'd say, because you came in right in the, right at the beginning of the entire levy process, so I'm sure you definitely hit the ground running.
Yeah, the day of my, of my induction is when we, you know, voted to put the levy on the ballot. So it's been very busy, a lot to learn, and of course, the levy, and getting that information out there, and then the beginning of the school year.
Yeah. Is there, what's been the biggest surprise, like something that you thought would be like, or unexpected question about the levies? Is there anything that's come up about that?
Um, I, nothing jumping out at me, unexpected question. I think that Dr. Reed's staff, the treasurer, Angel Latham, and the levy committee all did a really great job of anticipating a lot of questions. Angel's been, you know, she's a wealth of knowledge, she's, she's been, you know, very open, and she's just great as far as any type of questions that anybody would have about, you know, school funding. As you know, of course, school funding is very complicated, and...
Don't worry, we're not gonna go into a long discussion on school funding.
Right. And, and it's, you know, it puts too much of the onus on the taxpayer, and unfortunately, the schools, there's a, you know, a lot of animosity towards the schools, and the schools aren't responsible for that. And, you know, I think that Reynoldsburg has done an excellent job of managing the funds that have been given to us, and, you know, that's why we haven't gone to the voters in 14 years. And, you know, it's just, it's time, and many of the surrounding districts have gone back to the voters several times for levies, but we have managed our funds in a way that that hasn't been necessary until now.
It's definitely, you stretched, stretched the dollars out, and, you know, full disclosure, I was on the board, so I was part of those early things, especially with open enrollment and trying to stretch that out. We had always had conversations about when to or when not to, and the problem is that in a perfect world, we would be much more preventative in nature and say, have a levy on at a point in time where it wasn't getting to an emergency status, and then we could do it to prep for it. The problem with that is not everybody wants to go that route, because they say, well, if you don't need it now, why should we do it? But the same problem is, when you need it, like now, then it's like, well, why didn't you ask earlier? So there's a lot of, you can't win one way or another, so that's kind of where it's in.
Right.
Now, you've been on the board for a short time, but what's your, what's been your favorite? Has there been like an event that's there that you're like, oh wow, this is, this is really cool, I'm glad I got to do this?
Um, I think the invocation, invocation at the beginning of the school year, you know, it was a great way to kick off the school year and things. And then also, I didn't get to attend at the various schools, but the principals for a day, I got to attend the luncheon afterward, and it was great to meet so many community members that were willing to come out and spend their time with our school kids and stuff, so...
Yeah, I got to talk with Cameron Fontana as he was given, and I haven't heard from him since, so I don't know if he made it through the day, but he was given a whistle at an elementary school, and so I think that was, that in itself, I wanted to stay for the whole day just to watch that. But yeah, it's a huge thing. So aside from the levy, what are some of the more important issues the district is facing right now?
Um, I think the amount of additional services that we're having to provide to our learners, whether it be social, emotional, or, you know, special, special education-type needs. And unfortunately, with staffing, it's difficult to provide all of those in-house, and we have to rely on vendors in the community, and of course, that's an added cost.
Yeah.
And, you know, that's, so, I mean, and we're still dealing with gaps from COVID. That has a long, long tail on it, but I would say, you know, today's learner is a lot different than when we were in school.
Absolutely. Well, I know there's good things about being on the board, too. I know there were a lot of things that I enjoyed. Have you found something that right now that's kind of like your favorite thing to be, aside from being on the show today, of course?
Um, it's getting to see all the innovative and fun things that the students get to work on and learn, and that our teachers, you know...
They do some amazing stuff, don't they?
They really do, yes, they do.
And I, I know when I got to, even now, when I get to go into certain schools and I get to see them, I'm like, wow, they're, you know, making QR codes that take you to movies and displays, and, you know, some of the art and other things, so that's, that's pretty cool stuff. Well, I can't imagine anybody has any questions.
No.
All right, you made it through. Do you have a few minutes where I kind of go over some of the other fun things?
Sure.
Um, so a lot of things going on in Reynoldsburg, you know, we do have the election, early vote is open now in Licking, Franklin, and Fairfield County, so if you want to go ahead and vote, you know, we've got that. We do have the levy request, it's 6.65 mils or $233 per $100,000 of value, but I strongly, strongly, strongly recommend you go to the county websites or the school website and actually put in what your house has assessed, and it will give you the most accurate number, so that way, don't just assume that that's what it's going to be. Also like to highlight apartment complexes that are out there, just so that way people know that yes, indeed, they do play, pay property taxes. So Elbert Village, which is off Livingston, they pay about $38,348 a year in property taxes to the school district, or when you break down their rent and the number of units, it's about $1,198.38 per unit. So that kind of gives an idea of what the apartment complexes do. But there's tons of great resources on the webpage, so go ahead and check that out. And later today, and when I say later, I'm like talking in like a half an hour, board member Mandy Young is gonna be at the Graham Road Welcome Center, and she's gonna be taking office hours from 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock, so go ahead and check that out. I know one big thing that we've got going on is the Reynoldsburg versus that team on the other side of 256. We've got a football game against them this Friday at their place, but we're also doing a food drive. I believe they're taking food at the Livingston campus, Summit Campus, and I think even all of the other schools are having something that they're collecting as well, but I'm sure even at the board office, there's an opportunity to drop some things off. So while we obviously want to beat them on the field on Friday, if not, we want to at least beat them in the collection of all of these goods, that way it goes to our Helping Hands Food Pantry for those in most in need, so go ahead and get that taken care of. A lot of other fun things going on. We have shop with a cop donations are being accepted through November 25th. Meyer gift cards are the most preferred example of everything. And then one cool thing that I saw on social media, I tend to go on social media, I didn't know if you'd seen that at all. One question I always see when it comes to traffic enforcement is, a lot of people say, hey, why don't you put a cop in whatever location and have him sit there, and you'll be able to ticket after ticket after ticket after ticket? So I actually had our clerk of courts break down where everything goes from an average ticket. Now, this is just an average ticket, this is nothing too spectacular, it's just a typical ticket for $120 that would go to, that, that would be the total cost of the ticket. Out of that $120, 25 of it is the actual fine. That is actually what would essentially go to the city from a, when people say the cops only pay, get tickets to make money, that would be it out of $120. $46 goes to cover the court costs, and so this is assuming you go to court, and that's part of the Ohio Revised Code, as are every one of these other things. Twenty dollars will go to the State Indigenous Defense Fund, nine dollars State Victim of Crime Fund, three dollars and fifty cents to the Division of Criminal Justice Service for Drug Enforcement, one fifty for the State Indigenous Drivers Alcohol Fund, five dollars to the Indigenous Defense Fund, and ten dollars for the Computerization Fund. Those are all part of the Ohio Revised Code and ordinance-based type of things. So legitimately, even if we wanted to put a cop on, let's say Kingsley, for instance. If we wanted to put a police officer there and just write tickets all day, you're only getting twenty-five dollars a ticket at most. And then at the same time, is that really the best use of everything? So I I had seen that and I'd been meaning to ask and I finally got that information. So thanks to Leslie Clark, our clerk of courts, for getting that information. I just thought it was interesting to have. Um a couple of other things that are going on, um big questions about our service building. So I do have a couple of pictures, but before I show you the picture pictures, I'm gonna show you kind of the layout. So I'm gonna have Jasmine show you with our incredibly complex uh visual displays. So what you're seeing is the existing service building. Uh that is the, on the far side, right over here. Right next to it is where the expansion of the new service building will go. So you can kind of tell that that's part of that Pine Quarry area. This was originally controlled by the school district, but in a deal earlier this year, uh we took care of that. They signed it over to us. So all the areas in yellow is actually where the service facility is gonna be built. There's going to be a buffer zone right there in the section where it's kind of like the red area, that that's going to be part of that exemption. But the cool part of it is the green highlighted thing, which that is actually all brand new to Pine Quarry Park. So that's actually an expansion. So there was a post earlier, thank you Jasmine, there was a post earlier that said, are they tearing down Pine Quarry Park for this? No, as a matter of fact, we're not. We're actually doing some other things with it and actually adding it. So uh these are the less than uh beautiful drawings of the building from the rendering, so you can kind of take a look at what it will be. Uh the city of Reynoldsburg has been in need of a service center for about thirty years now. It's just hasn't been up to the snuff of all the way. But a cool, couple of cool things with it is uh there you can actually see a fuel depot. So Reynoldsburg City School buses will be able to get fueled there. Our police cars will get fueled there, city staff, city trucks. And then also the the other thing is the fire trucks from Turo Township uh will get fueled there. So we'll all put our money into the gas tank, so to speak, and save everybody on all sides some pretty significant cost all the way across. And that's what the building will look like from the, I guess you'd say, the more aesthetically pleasing side of things. So that has been approved by council. We have gotten bonded. We actually got our interest rate earlier today. Um it was actually kind of interesting. So they had a deadline at ten forty-five that they had to have everything submitted. So there was a clock counting down and then you refresh it every so on and then you'd see the companies that are, you know, the investment agencies that are bidding for it. And um it was interesting because he's like, you wanted to have some kind of like impending theme music playing as the count, as the clock counted down. We actually ended up having seven different uh organizations bid for us um and we got a good uh rate. To kind of give you an idea, the difference between the one that got the best interest rate to the next best is actually saving the city about six hundred thousand dollars uh uh overall throughout the course of it. So that's a pretty significant chunk. Uh so there we go. Do we have a question? Was it about the service building?
It is, and we have two others besides that. Um what services will move or consolidate to this new building?
Everything, parks and water, uh which are currently located off Turo Road, those are all gonna move over to the service building. The street department is already on that location currently.
Another question, these are service questions. It says, if the city opts to begin leaf pickup without residents having to bag them, would it be an option for residents along the artery streets, Rose Hill, Lancaster Avenue, et cetera?
Uh that one I'll have to get back to you. I know that we do, we will have it in the budget uh that's coming up for next year for leaf collection. That's a good question. I don't know because those are a little bit more well-traveled roads. I don't know how that one would work, but that's a good question. I will find out and I'll bring that into the show next week.
All right, and this one is off topic, but we'll get, let's go ahead and get to it.
Is it Wagner Road?
Nope.
Okay.
I I I wasn't gonna ask away. I would know you were getting to that one. It says, can you speak to the human trafficking investigation and letter released by RCS and anticipate a communication to the community? It just talks about can people be more aware and attentive eyes and protecting our children? Can you talk to any more about that?
You know more about it than I just, I, because it's a investigation, the FBI, they do random, not random. They do periodic sting operations and they found somebody that may or may not have had a connection to something with multiple school districts. I believe it was a DJ, I think is what it is or something like that. Um so that's something that's there. Obviously, the best place for that is the FBI has, I don't know how much information that they've released. Yeah, and because it's, because it's, I don't want to say it's an active or pending investigation because it's already, you know, they quote unquote arrested people. I would think that based on what my experience is with human trafficking, um one, having conversations with kids about what that world is like and, you know, I I it it's much more complex than stranger danger. Um you have to have those kind of conversations with it. I I know that the Human Trafficking Organization in Reynoldsburg City Schools, they do do presentations and things like that on a regular basis. Um and they are involved in it. Um it's unfortunate that this is out there, but definitely something to be aware of.
And and it is something that, you know, you can find a little more information on. I think it's the FBI's website or the Department of Justice's website uh about this individual. I mean, this person was unfortunately um using drugs to lure young girls into some activity. And really, the school did not get any more information than, you know, what is being put out there in the public. And, you know, we are, they're just trying to get anybody that may have been impacted by this individual in order to keep him in jail longer.
I'm in favor of that.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that. Um yeah, how do we transition from that one? AEP, I had a great meeting with AEP yesterday. Uh one of the big topics that's come up for those of you that have been paying attention. Uh there's a substation on Lancaster Road, kind of by Dyna Lab, across from the Postal Workers Union Hall, that um it looks really, really, really old. Um it eventually is gonna be decommissioned. Uh the process is gonna be, you know, later this year and then everything's gonna be switched over to a much more powerful and stable location, which is off Aster on the other side of Magnotten. So that was getting a little bit of an update about that, so keep that in mind, um that that will be there. When they do transfers for electric, you probably won't even notice. One great example was when we were doing the transfers of electric power uh at the corner of Wagner. They did it in the middle of the night and no one noticed. It was just the power flickered off for about three to five seconds and then it was back on and everything was fine. So that's probably what's going to happen at some point in time, but we'll let you know ahead of time. Uh as far as our parks are going, we got a lot of fun things going on. Uh we have the Mel Clemens Community Service Award. For those of you that uh have, know someone who has dedicated themselves to volunteering at a high level uh in Reynoldsburg in the last year. You have just a couple of days, I think it ends next week, uh for the nomination, so you can go ahead and get that in. Previous winners include April Darling and Sue Brusk, uh both people that have dedicated lots of time to the community over the years. Um we do have a kind of a brief update on Civic Park. I did see something about Civic Park. We do have plans for Civic Park. Now we just have to find ways to pay for Civic Park. So what we're trying to do is without having to go to the taxpayers for a park levy, uh we are using the property tax funds from the Rose Hill Project and the Wagner Road Project. And as those, now that the Rose Hill is complete, we're gonna start seeing a return on that property tax dollar. And all of that is gonna be pushed into um the Civic Park thing. Unfortunately, the way the process works with this is we have to do the most boring stuff first, which means we have to replace the electric lines and all the water lines throughout. That is the least fun thing to do uh with that one. Our goal is to have that first phase in twenty twenty-six. And that would also include um getting everything ready for the dog park and the frisbee golf. So all of those things would kind of be in that first package. If we are able to acquire funding through different grants and other resources, things like that, we may be able to push that up a little bit, but that's where we're looking for for right now. So hopefully that kind of creates uh phases that in a little bit. Um I had a great town hall yesterday at the Senior Center. It was a lot of fun. Uh had some good questions. Not too many questions about the school levy, um which was interesting, but definitely a lot of questions about Wagner Road, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. But really, the big thing is we've got Hollow Weekend in the Berg last weekend. It was a great time. Uh thank you to the Reynoldsburg Community Association for being so cooperative with everything that we did. Uh it's a great thing uh with the kids playing in the tennis courts. We had the bonfire. We had all sorts of fun things going on. And my favorite part was obviously the dinosaurs because I just thought that was fun. Special shout out to Carrie Acosta, who uh found a dinosaur to bring to uh the event and uh was there the entire time. It was amazing. It was fun. I think my favorite part, outside of seeing the kids look at the dinosaurs, and some were just like happy and ran right up and gave hugs. Others of them, they thought they were real dinosaurs and they were gonna get eaten. But the fun thing was when other people in dinosaur costumes were there too and they would all get together and everybody was clapping and having fun. And that was a really cool thing. So it was a great event. Really cool to see what the pumpkin carver did. Uh if you had it, did you get a chance to see what it looks like as as it's all done with the little cricket thing riding on top of it? It is phenomenal. And again, proving once again, I have no talent for any of that stuff. So that was fun. Trick or Treat, however, is next Thursday. It is rain or shine. Uh it's from six to eight o'clock. Uh so keep the my eye out for all of that fun stuff. Um any questions, any comments, anything like that?
Yes, we says, um this is kind of a follow-up to the human trafficking question, but it's as saying that Ohio is ranked number five or top five in five states, top five states, excuse me. And then it asks, does that explain the new high-rise power towers going up on Bryce Road?
I assume that that's probably the Aster Station, not related to human trafficking. But I I got it with it. Yeah, Ohio actually has been, and there's a couple of reasons for it. The connections between, in essence, Canada and all the way down into the south going through seventy-one has been a connection. Even really going through thirty-three, that has been part of it. And so there is a connection with there, which is why it's always monitored. Um which is one of the reasons why we shut down the Days Inn. Um that was going on at the Days Inn. We knew it. We were able to shut it down and we have not gotten those type of complaints again. But the power lines, yeah, that's to help for everything all the way across for some power stability. And most likely also providing power to some of the big data centers uh in the New Albany area too. All right, so Wagner Road. Um Wagner Road is going to see what we've been talking about for the last couple of weeks. The bridge at Wagner Road is going to be shut down one week from uh Friday. On Friday, November first, the bridge is gonna be shut down. You will have no access to Wagner Road from Main Street. However, you will be able to drive in each direction, uh otherwise known as north and south, uh for everyone else on Wagner Road from Broad Street all the way basically to the VFW. So you'll have complete access. Um believe it or not, I think it's actually gonna alleviate some of the traffic issues because people still have to use Lancaster or Rodabaugh or Priestley, but they'll be able to go north and south all the way throughout. Uh we'll get some notifications out there because obviously there's a couple of polling locations on Wagner Road that we want to make sure people are aware of. We'll get that stuff out there as well. The reason why this is happening is this is a Franklin County Bridge. They have authority over it. It is not a Reynoldsburg Bridge. And so while they knew we were doing the Wagner Road project, they thought, hey, wouldn't it be great if we just go ahead and deal with the Wagner Road Bridge at the same time as the Wagner Road project? It's fun. Um so that's what's going on with that one. It is basically, they're scraping away everything on top and they're gonna rebuild it. Uh it is scheduled to last no more than sixty days. Hopefully, we can get it done a little bit sooner, but this is something that was on schedule all the way across. Uh once that is done, they have two culvert areas that they will have to do, that they want to get in before the end of the year. So you'll see some kind of mix and match between certain sections all the way across from there. They will also be doing stormwater work, which really shouldn't impede any traffic issues uh during the winter time. And then starting in the spring, that's when you start to see the other stuff, the curbs, the gutters and all of that type of stuff, similar to what you saw last, uh the last couple of years on Main Street. The stuff that you actually see happening with the curbs and gutters and streetlights and all that, that's the last stuff that goes in. Everything else up to this point has been putting in a new water line, putting in a new gas line, putting in uh the water connections and the gas connections and all of that stuff. Moving AEP uh power lines, all of that. So it is a very complex project and it is estimated to be completed Phase One in August of next year, which will be about the same time that Phase Two takes off. And Phase Two will start at Priestley and go all the way to Broad Street. So that's Wagner Road. If you have any questions, feel free and check out the website for a couple of updated pictures and some status reports. And there's an email address in there uh that ultimately will get to me and I'll answer those questions for you. Anything else coming on? All right. Well, ladies and gentlemen, it's been a lot of fun. Um good information from a coroner and even though he did not bring his wall of brains, uh it was great information to hear from him and thank you for joining me today. Obviously, you know, being a board member is one of the most thankless jobs you will ever have. But you do this for the kids of the community. Yeah, you're certainly not doing it because of the fun perks and great pay. This is all, this is all about actually wanting to make sure the kids have a better education and I appreciate it. Um best of luck with the levy. I know you're restricted from saying certain things. I'm not. So I'm really excited about the fact that I'm hoping that this one works through. I know I was outdoor knocking this past weekend and got some good responses. And I would also encourage all of you out there to start emailing your state representatives and state senators, because once the election's over, they actually will go back to work. And wouldn't it be nice if they went ahead as an early gift to all of us and put in some protections for our senior citizens and those on limited incomes to freeze their property taxes as they are right now? Wouldn't that be awesome? That would be a good thing. I hope they do that. All right, everybody. Thank you very much for being here. Stay safe, stay respectful. Join me next week where uh we will have our Halloween edition of Reynoldsburg with the twelve o'clock show with Mayor Joe. And Reynoldsburg Clerk of Council Molly Crasher, who is always a great sport uh for dressing up on Halloween, will be here. It's gonna be a lot of fun. Uh again, stay safe, stay respectful. If somebody knocks on your door to talk to you about political stuff and you have a no soliciting sign, well, don't listen to them. But if they have, if you don't have one of those signs, talk to them, get the real information from the individuals out there or reach out to them individually. Make sure you go out and vote. And as always, please put your shopping carts away. Thanks again, everybody. We'll see you in a couple, we'll see you next week.